Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the Bath Charter Township Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, March 9th, 2021. So we have an agenda. If you are tuning in from wherever, you can find that on the Bath Township website. Are there any changes or additions amendments to the agenda as distributed? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as is?
I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Forward by Ryan, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign? Okay, the agenda has been approved. So we have one opportunity here for planning commissioners to declare any conflicts of interest that they might have with agenda items tonight. If you have a conflict of interest, please let us know.
I will. I think it's pertinent to mention that Eric Good knows a good friend of the family and involved in Cub Scouts with my children. That won't have any bearing on any vote, but I think it's fair to name out loud, and I'm a customer of this.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. Any other conflicts of interest to declare? If not, let's move on. So we have two opportunities for general public comment. This is the first. So if you would like to speak, raise your Zoom hand, your real hand, or otherwise, let us know that you'd like to address the planning commission. Not seeing any takers, so let's move on. So we've got three sets of minutes tonight to approve. So let's take the first, going back in time, the farthest February 9th, 2021, regular meeting of the planning commission. Any changes to those minutes?
On some of the pages, it says meeting agenda instead of meeting minutes, but some of the minutes do say meeting minutes at the top. So it's not a life or death thing, but I think it's helpful to the public if they ever get their hands on things to see the difference between an agenda and the minutes.
I'll correct that. Thank you. Okay, so not seeing any, any suggestions for February 9th, so let's kind of have a motion to approve the February 9th minute.
So moved.
Okay. There's a second, any further discussion? I see Ray, you just jumped on, so I'm gonna give you an opportunity to comment on the minutes if you'd like.
I haven't even read them, so I'm not gonna comment.
All right, all right. All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose the same sign? Okay, so the February 9th minutes have been approved. February 18th was our, the special meeting regarding broadband access in the township. Any amendments or changes to those minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
I was not there for that.
Yeah, okay. Ray, did I hear you make the motion?
I'll move that.
Okay. And Ryan, we have a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And those minutes have been approved. And lastly, February 3rd, 2021 minutes are our last meeting minutes. Any changes to those minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
I'll move to approve the minutes as submitted.
All right.
Sorry.
We have support by George. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the minutes have been approved. Okay. Communications, do we have anything tonight?
Yes, I do have a couple of things. First of all, thank you all for approving three sets of minutes in one night, and I apologize, that was 21 or 22 pages of good reading, so I know you all enjoyed that. The first item I just wanted to relay is that we received a letter from the county planning and zoning department. Beginning of last week, I believe, just informing us that they're beginning their comprehensive plan update. They also did let us know that they have a couple of interns from Michigan State's Urban Planning Program. That might be reaching out to myself or other departments of the township for some data or other information. And they said that they hope to have that plan update done by the end of 2021. They had planned a much larger overhaul of the plan, but they had to scale it back due to COVID-19. Particularly as it relates to public engagement. The second item is, we have finally set a date for the first meeting of the Internet Task Force. That will be next Thursday, the 18th. Am I remembering my dates correctly? Yes, I am. Next Thursday, the 18th, at 6:00 PM via Zoom. And a link to those members will be sent out closer to that meeting date. And then lastly, we received a couple of applications for Public Act 116s. That's a farmland open space preservation, for those of you who are not aware of that. The parcels that are in Bath Township that were applied for are primarily right around the 425 agreement and the old sod farm there. Those applications under state law are reviewed by the township board, and the board makes a decision on whether to approve or deny that application. We're also required to send those applications up to the county, and the county planning commission has the opportunity to provide comments if they have any. I spoke with Doug Riley, the planning director for the county on this, and he has said that he does not anticipate that there will be any comments. And that's all that I have.
Nick, is, this does not include the sod farm, but these are parcels around the sod farm. I assume then around the Chandler Road area, is that correct?
I, excuse me, that's correct. So they did also, the property owners also submitted applications for parcels. With the appropriate entities, of course, that are in the city of East Lansing and Meridian Township. So my understanding is generally that whole area is what, what they're requesting. It just happens to be in three different jurisdictions.
Ryan, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I'm wondering if the Internet Subcommittee, is that, excuse me, a public meeting? Will that be streaming on Facebook, or is that a closed Subcommittee?
I am trying to remember exactly what we had determined on that.
So I don't think we have determined that quite yet. Jason, I don't know if you've given that more thought. Jason, you have?
So, my understanding in having conversations with Karen is that I, we want as much of it to be open and transparent as possible. And so, what I don't know is if we're going to, if the, if the, that committee or that task force decides to do work, some group work, if those will be recorded. So whole group meetings will be recorded and livestreamed to Facebook. We will, however, give them a, a chance to have voice in whether or not they want that. So there'll be some negotiation, which is why I think it might be a little bit unclear.
Right.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Jason. That, that cleared it up for me, too. And lastly, for that, I'll just add that, that, that first meeting should be largely organizational, just discussing the scope of work. What the charge of the, the task force is, designing a timeline, and determining what those end products would be.
Thanks, Nick. Okay, I think we can move on then to old business. So the first item under old business is a public hearing on the, the expansion at 8040 Coleman Road. So I'm gonna open the public hearing, so we can start probably with a report from staff on this expansion project. And then we can open it up for public comment, and then any commissioner comments as well. So, Nick?
Thank you, Dan. As you'll see, in the middle here of our very lengthy packet, I believe it starts on page 78, is the staff report for this proposal. Filled it in with the agency review comments that are on the second page of the staff report. Nothing too extremely concerning. There's been some conversations between the applicant and the road commission. Related to site distance, I think that they can get that hammered out, and that shouldn't impede the, the project at all. As you'll see, the current site distance is about 315 feet. Whereas the recommended site distance for that speed limit is about 360 feet. So still fairly close to what's being looked for, and, and in having a conversation with Kurt Kuhulik, the engineer for this project. I think that they can resolve that issue without too many obstacles. We do have Brad Gersky from SCUMA on the, on the line tonight. I know that there's been significant conversation between SCUMA, the township, and the engineer for this project as to the proposed private sewer connection. And so I thought it would be helpful, and Karen agreed to have somebody from SCUMA on the call tonight, so that we could get any questions related to that resolved. Aside from that, nothing too terribly glaring in the, in the agency comments, as I said. And so, any questions, you know, we have a handful of folks here that would be able to answer those.
Thanks, Nick. Yeah, and it's just worth noting, too, that given some of those couple uncertainties, you're not making a recommendation yet on what to do with this.
Yes, I actually would like to walk that back, Dan. In having had several conversations with SCUMA since Friday. It's my understanding that the finalized design would not necessarily go into place until the township has, has stated that they're comfortable with it. There's been additional conversations between myself and Superintendent Hilda Brand about the application to MDOT for the permit for them to be able to go under the road. So in effect, and it was additionally a SCUMA recommendation that there be an agreement put in place between the township. SCUMA and AND repair, just stating that any maintenance of that private sewer connection would be the responsibility of AND repair. But it is my understanding that in the past, the township has either engaged in the application process or been the applicant itself for a permit for MDOT for a project like this. So Having said that, and you know, as I said in the staff report, the final design wouldn't be put together until the full, all of the, you know, okays are in, in place from SCUMA and the township and MDOT. We can hammer out some conditions of approval, but I would recommend approval of this project.
Today, tonight?
If you all feel comfortable approving it tonight, then I would happily make sure that we word conditions appropriately tonight.
Okay, so it might be a best, I'm not sure what we have here for public, but maybe this, open this up for public comment, and then we can circle back around to planning commissioners and representatives of the applicant as well. So anybody from the public would like to comment on this issue? Kurt?
Yeah, hi. I'm not necessarily public. I am Kurt Kuhulik with DC Engineering, and we are the site designers. So this, a quick little update on a couple items. One of the comments in the, in the other agency's review was from MDOT. You probably saw those last time that we presented, and they had some questions and issues on the stormwater system. Those have been resolved and approved. MDOT is waiting now on the sanitary sewer plans before they will issue a permit. So that's where MDOT sits, and this afternoon I got okay from the road commission to maintain that drive approach location. We did do a site distance analysis, and we have actually 367 feet of site distance from the driveway going east, or yeah, going east in Coleman. We will, though, it's, it's real tight, and so we are going to also install a hidden driveway head sign, just for an added security. And, and he's gonna have to maintain that area between the road and their fencing as a clear vision area. So no tall shrubs or trees or, or billboards or anything like that. So we, we do have road commission approval, and Nick, Mark said he would send you a letter out as soon as he's able for that. And other than that, that's, now that we, everybody sort of has conceptually approved the sanitary concept. We want to proceed forward with that actual design and get those plans prepared. So I have no other comments unless people have questions for me.
Okay, thanks, Kurt. We can stay on this if people do have questions, and then bring it back to the public. So any questions for Kurt at this time? Not seeing any. Okay, anyone from the public that would like to address the planning commission on this issue? Okay, not seeing any. Okay, so let's bring it back to planning commission members. So general comments, questions for Kurt or any of the other representatives of the applicant here? Nick?
If no one else does, I have one that I have discussed with Kurt, but was hoping that either himself or Eric could touch on a little more. SCUMA had relayed to me that they had some questions and possible concerns as it related to the RV waste dump. Just whether that would be private and used only for that particular business, or if that would be a public waste dump. And possible necessity or alternatives to that is, could, could anyone speak to that?
Eric?
Yeah, Nick, in regards to that, the reason for wanting that RV sanitary dump station is we service motor homes and travel trailers for the community. And we have to service those tanks, and right now we have to travel a great distance or to other businesses to get that accomplished. Our, our only plan is for serviced units to be using that facility. It will not be open to the public or a service station.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you, Eric. I know that that was something that SCUMA had asked about, and so I thought I'd pass that question along. I do know Brad Gersky is on the call. Brad, does that answer any questions that you had about that? I know that there had been mention of possible Eagle concerns with that as well.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Nick. As, as it relates to the RV dump, there's typically two issues with the RV dump. One, Eagle, which we are permitted through, is, is not necessarily in favor of RV dumps for multiple reasons. Typically, it's an uncontrolled discharge point into the sewer, so it's hard to regulate. So if, if it's an absolute necessity, there would have to be some type of sample point for us to be able to access, you know, what would be dumped at that point. And the other concern is ultimately, since this line is going to a rather small lift station over in Dutch Hills there. We, we would hate to have any, you know, contaminants or RV waste get into that station. You know, and cause issues with the small pumps there. You know, it's our understanding this was originally designed as a, a small, basically a septic system extension. So, you know, we'd have concerns with the RV waste site for multiple reasons. Via ones that I had stated, but also, you know, illicit connections, stormwater runoff, et cetera. Entering those, that facility and overwhelming that small station. So there, there's ways we can mitigate that, but we'd have to get more details on how that'd be completed.
Okay, thanks, Brad. Well, that seems like an issue that needs to be resolved, then, I think. So Brad, I don't know if now is the time to, to share some of those recommendations, or Eric, if you've got some ideas on how to address this issue, but it seems like one that we need to resolve fairly soon, or Kurt?
Um, yeah, I mean, some simple recommendations as far as the RV dump would have to be. One, it'd have to be some type of locked source to verify that it would be only used for, you know, the business purpose as stated. Also, it would have to be substantially finished above ground to avoid any water runoff, debris from the parking lot, et cetera, getting in. But ultimately, the whole system's gonna have to then go into a sampling point that, for IPP that we'd have, we'd be able to have access to and set up our sampler. To be able to sample to make sure that we're not getting anything of the ordinary other than domestic sewage. So the sampling point would have to be a manhole access, which could be done either right prior to the discharge into the lift station or on the facility site itself.
Okay. Thanks, Brad. So planning commissioners, any comments on that recommendations? Or Nick?
So for the road commission piece, since we don't have proof of what Kurt shared with us, will that, will the requirement be that we have the letter on file, or how would we write that up? Not that I think Kurt is lying, or?
No, we, we usually do put as, in, in this instance, it would be a, a condition of approval would be that, you know, evidence of that approval from the road commission would be provided to the township.
Great, thank you.
George?
George? I had a question going under the road. I don't know if we can. Yes, I don't know if we can do anything about the, going under the road there. It's like my internet's unstable a little bit, but long story short, I didn't know if we could address, it might not have anything to do with this project, because I don't know how it goes under the road. But if we can hold accountable future issues, like with the dip, so dipping next year or the year after, you know, like maybe even one year would be great. I don't know. Is that something we can do or not? But we've had. Historically, we've had issues. The dips in the road.
Year after year.
Kurt, you'd like to address that?
Yeah, if we, what we would be proposing to do was, would be to put a small pump station on the AND side of, of the road on their property. So it would be a very small forest main, an inch and a half or two-inch forest main that would go underneath the road, and that would be directionally drilled. So it's not like a typical sewer trench where you're probably concerned with backfill not being done properly, and then the road settling. So with the directional drill, they're essentially drilling a hole just a hair bit bigger than the pipe they're pulling through it. So you should not have any kind of settling issues with, as part of that.
Thank you. Eric?
In regards to Brad's concern on testing the sewer that goes through the RV dump. If, if Kurt in DC Engineering is going to design a, a small lift station on my property, is that an area that those testings can be done? That way, everything is on my site before it gets pushed over to the shared lift station?
Brad?
Sorry, I was getting unmuted there. Yeah, that would actually be fine. I mean, as long as we had access to that lift station, even though it's private, we could sample from that lift station point, that'd be fine.
So that'd be a good option for us, for you, anyway, yeah. And then in regards to locking it, I mean, whatever, whatever anybody needs, I can supply, you know, documentation or a letterhead that, that only management or owners have access to the key. And I imagine this is a, a 10 times a year incident where we would use that, say, you know, that drop station, very, very minimal. But, but, but business would grow, too. So I, I can only speculate, maybe, maybe it's 20 in five years. But we don't see a lot of issues. We try to recommend to our customers to bring their vehicles cleared of, you know, because it's not a fun job to really clean out somebody's motor home when it, it's not our job to do that. So it's just, we ran into it, and that's the, the best way to remove the waste in the most safe and sanitary way is to have a sealed system that works good for us. So.
Yeah, and I think that, and Nick can probably correct me on that, on this, it's, it's not our business, but that could probably all be worded in the utility agreement. Is that possible, Nick?
I, I would think so. You know, I'm not too terribly familiar with coming up with these utility agreements, but I don't see any reason why that couldn't be added in there.
Okay, other members or other public comments? Okay. Okay, well, so planning commissioners, I guess we have at least a couple options before us here. Nick is recommending approval tonight. There are some outstanding issues, but it's pretty clear, it sounds like we've got some ways to address the, the outstanding issues, and some progress has already been made since you've seen the, the packet. So we can entertain a motion tonight to approve the site plan as submitted. If you want to add conditions, we can do so, related to some of the concerns that were brought up tonight. Or we can take this at our next meeting as well. So comments from commissioners? John?
The, the, the key issues are with the sewer design and, and the dump station. I think we probably could put some conditions on it, that those things have to be resolved to the SCUMAs and the townships' satisfaction before we can proceed with it.
Yeah, that, that's kind of what I was thinking, too. John?
I'd like to see a more finalized plan that actually is what we're gonna actually construct before we vote on it.
So I'll, I'll let Kurt talk to this a little bit more, but this is where it becomes a little bit of a chicken and egg situation, because my understanding of it is MDOT isn't comfortable signing off on it until the township is comfortable signing off on it. And so the, the design is, it's sort of which comes first, the, the design or the acceptance of the, the concept of it. And this is why I'm glad that we have Kurt here, and we, of course, have SCUMA here, but also Superintendent Hilda Brand. So Yeah, Kurt, I know you and I talked about this a little bit.
Yeah, so, you know, to, to design this sanitary crossing the road and a pump station and the connection in the SCUMA. You know, we're looking at, we need to get out and do survey topo, we need to do design, we need to pick the pumps and design the station and all the controls. You know, we're, we're talking a significant amount of money to do a design, and we don't want us, Eric doesn't want to spend that, all that money to have it turned around and then say, no, we're not gonna prove that as a concept. So we really do need that as a concept approval minimum tonight, so that we can proceed forward with the design. And then, you know, our challenge is obviously to make sure that we approve it to SCUMAs, MDOTs, and the townships' standards. It's a, it's not a difficult design, it's just takes some time and some money to, to get it done. But we would be looking for approval of the concept. So we have a good idea that once we get plans together that everybody agrees upon, that we'll be moving forward in that way.
John?
Don't have any problem with that. The concept is very workable, I would say, but I would like to see the completed concept, so that we know what's gonna be constructed.
Well, so going back to Ray's recommendation, we can, we can approve the site plan with the two conditions that, you know, the, the concept design and the RV, the, the RV dump is, is acceptable to those that are concerned, the township and SCUMA and, and elsewhere, right? Is that acceptable to, to everyone here? Is that satisfactory to let you go forward, Kurt?
Yeah, and it's, that's fairly typical, you know, as I do this and planning commissions, you know, it's fairly typical to put those kind of conditions on. And really what it means is you won't be able to issue any building permits until those plans meet everybody's approval. But we can move forward with the site plan approval and, and start the rest of the, the design issues here.
John, what do you think?
I think that's very workable. I, I would like to see the final plans come back to the planning commission before we issue a building.
Okay, I mean, we can, we can make that a condition without approval at that time, but we can review those, those plans as they come back. So suggestions for a motion, then?
Just a question. So are, are we proposing that the site plan be approved, but have them come back once the concept for the, the private crossing is created? And then that would be when a vote on the special use permit would be determined?
I don't have any problem voting on the special use permit right now, but I would like to at least have another look at the final plans of what they're gonna construct.
have another look at the final plans of what they're going to construct.
Hey Nick, why don't you write the condition um, that not only, you know, that, that you could explicitly call the township or the planning commission then has uh, review and approval rights over the sanitary design?
George, you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to know if we were going to include language concerning the hidden drive and uh, you know, the sign and having the rush kept up also and some type of.
Yeah, we could put that as a, it sounds like they're well on their way to getting worked out too, but we could add that as a condition as well. Eric, did you see your hand come up?
Yeah, the, my concern, um, obviously I know John looking out to seeing that concept design and getting everything moving, that's a great outlook. The, on, on my side of things, as a business owner trying to build this facility, there, you know, obviously we wouldn't be building anything, but there's things that I could be doing with site plan approval like um, ordering steel for my building, you know, at the, we can move forward. Some, some of that stuff is five, six months out. And every day during COVID affects me drastically for, you know, getting stuff or in order to get things moving around. So I don't see us building anything and, you know, until we get this concept figured out for the sanitary, but one way or another, there's a sanitary option to build this building, whatever it might be fit, right? Whether it's raised mound septic system on the property or, you know, so does that disrupt my site plan to continue with forward moving of, of my construction, you know, is what I'm asking?
John?
Uh, I don't have any problem moving forward with that part of it at all, Eric. I, it's just that we have in the past had situations where the construction and the uh, original drawings that were submitted don't match. And I don't want to, I'd kind of like to avoid that situation.
Absolutely. Well, I mean, Kurt can just enlighten on that and my architect, we, we've gone through the build pretty, pretty vigorously before bringing it to the township. Uh, we've been working on it for seven months and um, we've got a pretty good solid direction of where everything's going other than this uh, sanitary concern. So I don't see many direction changes. Do you, Kurt? I mean, as far as.
Though, um, you know, obviously um, typically when you go for a building permit, you're, you're signing off that you're uh, submitting that with the most up to date set of plans. So that's what the building department's approving. So you still have that last step of the building uh, approval form uh, to physically start construction to make sure that everything is in place.
So it still sounds like we're talking about con- uh, conditional approval tonight. Is that correct? Is everyone comfortable with that? John, Ray, John?
I'd move to approve conditional approval based on the conditions that Nick wrote about the site distance so forth.
Okay, we should probably get those conditions uh, read to us. Bert, did you have a comment?
Yeah, absolutely. I wouldn't, as the building official, I wouldn't issue a building permit for any reason until um, we got something back from all those agencies with approvals. Just to, to John's um, mind that we wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. Uh, that would be a condition that would have to be met. So if you guys do apply conditions to your motion, I'll call it that, and it passes, of course, um, that will sort of be the, the, the way it is in order to get a building permit.
Yeah, okay. Um, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Uh, I don't think I actually did that. Nick, do you want to read back to us the um, conditions if you have them or?
Sure. So just before I do that, I do just want to state also that uh, just in the past couple of months, I've developed sort of a control sheet that I use internally uh, that keeps track of each step in the, in the process of a site plan review or a special use permit all the way from having had it submitted all the way through, you know, planning commission review, public hearings, obviously if it's a special use permit, then it, it also involves the board. Um, essentially, you know, working with the building department to make sure that unless that control sheet is completely filled out and has signatures on every step of the way, uh, anyone couldn't come in and pull building permits on it. Not that we've run into that issue, but I think it's a good piece of documentation to have just to make sure that everyone knows where we're at in the process. Um, so having said that, I have one condition written down, which is the review and approval rights for the, by the planning commission over the sanitary design. Um, I know there had been mentioned about the, excuse me, the road and the site distance, but I wasn't quite sure how we wanted to word that one as well.
I, I think that's just that, um, I mean, they, they sound like they're, they, they've got some uh, approval to, to go ahead as planned based on the new measurements. And so maybe just getting confirmation uh, from, I guess, the road commission? Or from uh, not, not the road commission actually. Road commission? Okay. From the road commission on those plans, you know, for the uh, signage and unobstructed views, that sort of thing. And then I think the third issue is just the uh, what's that?
I said maintenance. Future maintenance.
Yep, the maintenance agreement with the township. What else am I missing, commissioners?
I think we need to include in there that we have a an agreement with MDOT for that sewer going underneath, underneath the MDOT road. And I assume that agreement would be with the township, with the township then having an agreement with A and D, that A and D is going to maintain it.
Yeah, my understanding is that would fall under the, the maintenance agreement that was just mentioned, or George, were you talking about a maintenance agreement in terms of the site distance?
Anything that's future, future maintenance. So the, so the township doesn't absorb cost on the road for things that were agreed upon by the owner.
Okay, Nick, you want to try this again? See, read back to us what we have? I want to make sure that we get this right to everyone's satisfaction here.
Right, I agree with you. Just one second.
Sure.
Okay. All right, so I have five conditions now, first being uh, that the planning commission has review and approval rights over the sanitary, the private sanitary connection design. Uh, the second being that the applicant will enter into a maintenance agreement with the township and or SCUMA regarding that private sewer connection. Uh, stating that all maintenance is the responsibility of the applicant. Applicant will need to confirm approvals from all entities that have reviewed this plan. Uh, and uh, maintenance, the applicant will enter a maintenance agreement uh, saying they will maintain site distance on the south side of the property per road commission uh, comments. And then lastly, all conditions must be met prior to being allowed to pu- pull any building permits.
Do we want to make sure we're explicit about the, the RV dump uh, and, and SCUMA's approval of that design? Uh, it's, it's, I think that, that entity that has to be satisfied more than, more than the planning commission at this point, I think.
Correct.
SCUMA satisfied.
George?
Chair, do you think we need to mention, or whoever, do we need to mention the sample point in that also?
I think that's part of SCUMA's uh, approval of that RV dump.
Okay.
My understanding, that's the case.
That's what I thought.
Do we need to men- include in there the agreement between the township and MDOT for that sewer crossing?
I think, was that, was that mentioned? I think that was.
Yeah, I, again, I believe that would fall under the maintenance agreement that stating that A and D repair would be responsible for all maintenance of that sewer, that private sewer connection under the road.
That would, that would be that, but MDOT, I believe, MDOT's going to require an agreement with the township to put that sewer in there. Under the, under the MDOT road.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, they require a permit for that to be done.
All right, we must be up to six or seven conditions. It's not as scary, not as scary as I think it sounds, but um, I think we're covering our bases here. So uh, do we need it read back one more time just to be clear? Are we good?
Give me just a second to write these down and I'm happy to repeat them if anybody wants.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll read just a couple that we've just added. Uh, the I guess that'd be, what, the sixth condition would be uh, approval by SCUMA of the concept for the RV waste dump and sample point. Uh, and then the seventh would be that the applicant will work with the township ship and MDOT to receive MDOT approval of the private sewer connection. And I was contemplating added language in there about uh, the permit, but I feel like that's covered there.
Okay, so then uh, we can see, is there a motion then to approve the site plan and special use permit with conditions as noted?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there support? Jason supported the motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose the same sign? Okay, the motion carries.
Aye.
Internet delay. Uh, all right, gentlemen, thanks for being with us tonight and answering questions and, and providing your comments. It was really helpful. Thank you. Okay, so we can move on, I think, to the second item under old business, which is the uh, buffer yard um, discussion at 7551 Coleman Road. So you remember this is coming back to us. I guess it's just been a couple of weeks ago. Uh, so Brian, or sorry, Nick, please, Nick, uh, can you lead us into this?
I, I won't hold that against you. We did just
Thank you.
Think pretty hard about those conditions. Um, so yes, I, as you can see, I've received a revised landscape plan uh, from the applicant. We do have James Gray, the landscape architect, as well as uh, Brian Biskin, the engineer for this project. And I will turn it over to them to discuss what changes have been made and answer any questions.
That would be great. I'll let it, uh, you guys work it out. Who wants to go first? James or Brian?
Yep, so thanks again for having us tonight. Um, as you can see from our prior meeting, um, what we decided to do is, per your suggestion, we've decided to take down some trees along that west property line in order to uh, provide better screening uh, with some evergreens and whatnot um, to the adjacent residents. Um, so if you look at sheet L1, Nick, I'm not sure if you can share your screen or get that drawing up?
Uh, yeah, I can share my screen if given host permission.
But essentially what we've decided to do is, is take down six trees uh, that are existing, deciduous.
Sorry, I keep opening the wrong tab.
No worries.
There we go.
So that are, that's trees, uh, 18, 20, 22, 23, 26 and 29. Um, and those are existing trees, not the best quality trees, or they're probably either going to be box elder or cottonwood. Um, they're in the, in the tree list up there to the upper right on this drawing. Um, and uh, Nick, if you can go to sheet L2, what we've done is in those locations where those trees have been removed, we have planted um, 10 evergreens, which are white spruce. It's a native tree to Michigan. Um, Commissioner Baker, I know you had mentioned the hemlock, uh, but there are, there's an insect issue with those trees, so I try to stay away from those. Um, they're pretty, pretty difficult to get established because of that insect. Um, so I've chosen another uh, uh, native evergreen, a little bit denser than the hemlock, uh, which I think will provide some pretty good screening.
Thank you, James. Brian, I don't know if you have anything to add?
I do that.
Okay, thanks. So commissioners, uh, we'll just bring it back to you. Um, I, I like the, I like the plan here. I think, uh, so curious if um, we've recalculated and maybe this is not essential, whether the, the new plan actually meets the uh, the letter of the ordinance or?
Uh, yes, it does. You're, you're getting um, exactly what's required along both the southwest property line and the west property line.
Okay. Commissioners, any comments, questions? Thumbs up, thumbs down?
I think that looks much better than before.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, I think we're all in agreement. This looks good. So thanks for being flexible. Um, I don't think there's any vote needed at this point. This comes back to us uh, a little later, but I think your buffer yard uh, is, is looking good, the plan is. Nick, anything to add?
Uh, no, just a reminder that the public hearing for this project is at our next meeting on the 23rd.
Okay. All right, Brian, James, thanks for working with us, uh, and thanks for uh, being quick about getting these, these plans back to us.
Okay, no problem. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for planning commission and have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, third item under old business is the comprehensive plan goals. And so Nick has provided in the packet um, the updated goals, objectives, actions with track changes. Uh, and so this, as you remember, is the result of our very lengthy discussion last time. So Nick, I don't know if you've had anything to, to add or by way of introduction, but it's fairly clear, I think, of what's been done, what you're proposing here.
Um, I don't, don't have much to add. My dog might, but um, no, I, I don't have much to add. Uh, you know, followed the uh, extensive but very helpful comments that were provided last time. Obviously there are track changes, so you can see all of that. Um, up to this point, had not received any additional comments back on these. Uh, you know, as you'll remember, it was last not last Friday, the Friday before that, that I had sent out uh, the first edited version followed by a revised edited version uh, last Monday. And so, you know, it's my understanding that uh, you know, no comments is probably a good thing at this point. You know, I think everyone said their piece and so you know, if there are additional changes, I'm obviously open to hearing those, but hopefully I've been able to uh, encapsulate those comments and incorporate those into the revised goals.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Let's open it up for discussion if there is any. So commissioners?
No, I did, this is one thing I did take a quick look at because it came out earlier. Um, and I thought it looked pretty good.
Yeah, I, I like the, the changes. I, I like everything about it, I think. Just to be clarified, Nick, the, the township growth principles, those are the existing township growth principles. There were no changes made to those. Is that right?
That's correct, yeah. Those were taken directly from the draft of the old goals.
Yep, okay. Okay, well, it doesn't look like there are any concerns on the new language. So um, so Nick, maybe give us the, the mile high view of kind of where we're at with the comprehensive plan now, next steps?
Been handing things over to Taylor and we're gonna wordsmith and start putting it into the uh, template that she's designed.
Okay, that's good. And do we have a, a sort of a ETA on when we might see a draft of that gossied up fancy uh, comprehensive plan?
Uh, defer to Taylor on that one.
All right, Taylor, sorry to put you on the spot, Taylor.
No, that's okay. Um, I do not have um, a very concrete ETA at this time. Um, I'm working on getting a contract together um, with the person that I mentioned before that will be assisting me with the design to take some of that off my plate. Um, so I'm getting that together right now. Um, so hopefully after I start my wordsmithing, as Nick puts it, um, I can start handing those chunks off to her and she can start putting that in um, the template that we will create, but it shouldn't take very long after we get the template created.
Okay, great. Thanks for that update. All right, are we ready to move on?
Just one additional thing, real quick, Dan.
Yeah, Nick.
Sorry, I just dropped my pen. Um, as we have discussed- As we have discussed, I believe at our meeting on February ninth. When we talked about the implementation section. I really do like that table, but I think that that's something that we can wait until. A later date, whether we amend the comprehensive plan or the next comprehensive plan update to go through that process. Of determining, you know, what players would be involved, the priority, the timeframe and any potential cost on that, you know, I know that. Most of the commissioners here are ready for the comp comprehensive plan update to be done with. So we'll save that for next time unless there are really strong objections and somebody really wants that filled out.
Any objections here? No, okay. Okay, great. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Taylor. So we're looking forward to see what you bring back to us. Okay, so the last item under old business is the, again, the adult use marijuana. So I did send out a note. Kind of explaining kind of where we're at, but essentially I think our task for tonight is to discuss the criteria, the the competitive review criteria. And to try to provide. A more explicit kind of system for weighting those criteria. In the same way that we do similarly to to the comprehend or to the CIP. So I asked you to go through those eighteen criteria. And sort of take a first stab at categorizing those criteria as either high, medium, or low priority. I think if we can get there, we can probably use a similar system to what we're using now with the CIP to. To figure out a waiting system, but before we get there. Maybe just throwing a question out there if you think that's a good idea. Or if there's other ways you want to approach developing a waiting system for those criteria. And and maybe too, since we have two members of the board here, Jason and Ryan, if there's any sort of backstory. That might be helpful and kind of explaining why it's back to the planning commission now, if there's anything else that needs to be said, I guess.
I'm happy to share my two cents, Dan, and we have trustee Benzy I see lurking in the background too.
Joe's here too, that's right.
Way in. I I brought up some concerns is probably too strong of a way, some thoughts, some reflections that I was having at the last board meeting. About ensuring the competitiveness, we continue to get folks, good natured, respectful folks who show up at the township board meetings. And give public comment, and I know I've received lots of private messages. Saying we, we want to make sure that we have a fair shot at getting this adult use permit. But it feels like the priorities that have been put into place in the ordinance. Make it a no brainer that the one permit that we have allowed for. Medical will automatically get this adult use permit. And so we we had some discussion at the board in terms of building out what the application process would look like. So we can make it clear, you know, what what does the, when we say X, Y, Z gets priority? What does that actually mean? Is it a bonus, you know, five points? Is it a bonus one hundred points? So my my request to my colleagues on the board was, can we flesh this out a little bit so that we can ensure there's some level of competitiveness? And this isn't just de facto giving the one adult use permit to the one. Medical permit holder already. So that that was my my two cents on it. I'm sure Jason and maybe Joe have other thoughts.
I mean, all I had is. I, you know, related to that concern is just having a proper process put in a place that has as many eyes as possible on it to ensure that fairness.
Good, thanks. Joe, anything to add?
I share some of the same concerns, so that's why you got this back.
Okay. So. Yeah, and that one condition is interesting one because I thought we had a discussion. I know we had a discussion about this being a requirement. From the state, but that the state was sort of phasing out that criterion of. Of only allowing adult use permits. Granted to those holding medical marijuana permits, but my understanding, Nick, and I don't know if you have any updates, is that the state is no longer or soon will no longer be requiring that. Is that correct?
So I personally can't speak to whether or not that provision is is sunsetting at the state level, but. There had been previously a criteria in our competitive process stating that a medical. Marijuana license needed to be. In the applicant's hand before they could apply for an adult use. That language has been taken out. I can't stress that strongly enough. I've I thought I had made that clear to the public a couple of times, but. Maybe I just. Didn't make that clear enough. So there is no requirement that they have a medical license before they can apply for an adult use. The way it's currently written is there they. And that's depends on the waiting here. That there would be preference given to someone who has an existing medical. License, so. You know, I do just want to make sure that there's clarity on that distinction because, you know, I think preference is different from a requirement.
Good, Jason.
And just to add to that, I, my reading of that language is that that's not necessary to have that medical permits within our township. It says nothing about maintaining a permit within that criteria, criteria on.
You, yeah, and so that brings up the point, I think, but there, this is mentioned twice, I think, my understanding of it. So the compliance, under compliance factors. I think that's where you're noting that it's no. It's it's not a condition from the township that they have to have a township permit for medical marijuana. On the under business factors, item number seven. It says that the applicant has already applied or for or received a permit to operate a commercial medical marijuana facility within the township. So I'm not sure. Those are not exactly duplicate criteria, but they are very similar in my reading unless I'm missing something.
But then. Two different things because and I guess that number seven back there, I'm not sure why we even have that in there.
Right. So Jason, isn't that correct? I mean, you're reading that number seven under business factors is that township sort of. Right, the township at least, it's not a requirement, but it's a condition for the township level that they have applied for a medical marijuana facility.
Well, it's a scoring criteria. So I mean, I mean, one way to handle that is, you know. Do a one to five point scale for all the rest and do like a zero to zero point zero zero one point scale for this particular one.
Yeah. I mean, similar to what we did with CIP, I think we had something similar, right? Didn't we have essentially three kinds of. Three types of scores and those three types of scores translated into kind of a high, medium, and low priority. And so. I I would say that both of those could be, you know, we could consider dropping them. I think it makes a lot of sense, especially if the state is going to sunset. That criterion, but maybe we don't want to mess with actually dropping conditions at this point. Instead, we can just attach sort of a low weight to both of those criteria. Nick?
My recommendation would be a low weight because just to clarify, the board has not asked the the planning commission to change any of that criteria. And it's my understanding at this point, we actually can't because the first reading has already occurred.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, so maybe if there's no objection, we can just attach. And Nick, if you could just kind of keep notes and how to categorize these things. And then I I don't have the CIP waiting system in front of us, but I'm imagining something very similar. So I think if we can just attach low, medium, and high, we can translate that into points. That we can then kind of formalize the the scoring system. So there are no objections. Let's put both of those at low priority. Or low weights. And so maybe we can just go to the beginning and look at the the rest of the compliance factors. So we've got three other factors there. In addition to the one we just discussed, so one, three, and four.
I'm happy to share my screen again if anybody.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. It's over just. All right.
It it seems that the rest of the compliance factors are all pretty high priority.
I I had them all as high myself.
I would agree.
Okay. So with the exception of two, which we were putting in low, low weight, we're gonna, unless there's no objection, we. Put one, three, and four as weighted highly. Weighted strongly. So if that's the case, I think then we can move on to community factors. So we've got five community factors. And because Nick is sharing his screen, I have a little bit more difficulty seeing if you're raising your hands, so you can just go ahead and speak if you've got something to say. And I can. Sorry, George?
I rated the first couple is high also.
So I rated the, I rated the first is high. It seems sort of part and parcel of kind of our considerations for the planning commission. Just, you know, whether it's. Whether it fits with the surrounding businesses and neighborhoods. I read the number two is kind of the medium category. But I'm open to. Being persuaded otherwise or for discussion on that item. The first reads very much like the fact that the kind of thing that we might consider for a special use permit. Geographic location is dictated by, you know, in part, I guess, by the zoning district. And some of the other already criteria in the ordinance. And so I, you know, that that sort of is pretty well constrained already by the ordinance. And so my mind. I'm not sure that we have much flexibility in considering, you know. Beyond number one. If the geographical location is or is not a good fit because we've already constrained that quite a bit. I agree. Would everyone approve sort of a medium? Weight to that second criterion?
I would.
Okay. So let's look at number three, the suitability of the architectural and engineering design of the proposed establishment. Is an interesting one because we're getting into sort of, you know, architectural standards and and that sort of thing, but traditionally the planning commission has not said a lot. About design, architectural, engineering design. So thoughts on this one?
I think it should be medium.
I had it as medium just because that is an issue that we're talking about currently. And our hope is to develop some architectural standards, so. I think at least from our conversations, we've elevated these concerns a little bit recently in the township, planning commission at least. Any concerns about a medium weight there? Okay, let's go ahead and attach a medium weight to that. Item number four is the in increased policing requirements associated with the approval. Including the cost of any such requirements. Again, this is addressed somewhat in the ordinance already in some of the security sections. But there may be some other factors that, you know, relate to policing costs that are not explicitly considered, so. What do we think on this criteria?
I had a hard time picking out what what this would look like practically, one versus the other. I I just couldn't come up with a situation where one facility would need more than the other. Without it being in violation, like you said, of what's already in the ordinance.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's kind of where I struggle as well. I mean, you know, there's, I guess, some more fine resolution differences in location, citing locations, but probably. Not to the degree that it's going to change dramatically the cost of policing or the process of of policing. So I mean, my my. My suggestion would be to rate this at low. Since it's sort of covered elsewhere, not to say that the policing component of it, it's not important, but I think we we adequately sort of cover those bases elsewhere. Jason?
So one question I have for this is. I, it seems like how we would gather information for this would be a a input from the police department, right? And so if we wait this low, we de facto wait the police opinion low. And I I just. I do worry about that. And there may be other factors that we're not familiar with that that Lyle may be familiar with. So I would, I would argue. For a high rating. Practically, I'm going to trustee Fiuman Bliss's comment practically. If you can't differentiate between two different applicants, they both get a high score, it then nullifies itself in terms of a competitive criterion.
Comments or or reactions by other commissioners?
The way the order is drafted right now, haven't we restricted this to one location in the township that could have a medical marijuana, I'm not a medic, but a recreational marijuana facility?
No, that is not correct.
Not correct? Where can another one go?
I'm happy to pull up the GIS map that shows the the buffer allows. There are thirty some parcels within a thousand feet of the highway interchange, depending on how you map it.
Okay, didn't realize that. Okay.
Yeah, and and that's not a slight against you, Ray. I just want to make sure because people have have made that statement before and it's it's not accurate.
I'm glad you clarified it.
I am too.
All right, so. Even if we just use this one parcel here, that's part of the inner, if I would click on the correct one, that would be helpful. Part of the interchange there, I'll scooch this over. And run the buffer. A little more. Thirty four parcels fall within that. That area with. A variety of different owners. Yes, some of that land is owned by the state through Department of Transportation or the DNR, but there are many other property owners within that thousand feet. And so, you know, again, this sort of turns into the whole debate about. What is and isn't part of the interchange, and I think that that might be a helpful conversation to have as well, but probably at another time. Okay.
Thanks for clarifying that, Nick.
Sure. That was helpful. Thank you.
I'm I'm totally fine with the proposal here, the suggestion to to put this into the high waiting category. Any objections to that?
Nope.
Okay, so let's do so. Last one under community factors is whether the applicant. Has appropriately identified potential environmental issues, including steps to prevent or mitigate those issues.
Dressed within the ordinance, isn't it?
Much of it should be. Yeah, if it's not, we're we're, we have bigger problems, I think.
Yes, agreed.
Well, it's my understanding that Laura has additional rules on top of what the state law requires. For this, and so I would think between. State law, local ordinance, and and Lauren rules, that that would be covered pretty well. But again, I think this is another thing where. Broadly, it is important. You don't want to wait it too low and make it look like we're being dismissive of that problem.
Yeah, I mean, certainly in any site plan, we're going to get agency reviews from the appropriate people here. On whether they've complied with, you know, wetland issues or or whatever. Which is already built into the process. So I actually had this scored at low for those reasons, which is kind of contrary to probably how I normally come down on this kind of thing, but. I'm happy to. Yeah, George.
It's because there's, it's addressed in other parts of the language.
Other parts of the ordinance and other kind of portions of our our township ordinance and and the the requirements for site plans and special use permits. the requirements for site plans and special use permits. Yeah.
I was gonna say, even though it's covered by the order someplace else, it's still an important issue, so I, I it may be covered someplace else, but I think we need to let the applicant know that this is not something he just brush over. I, I guess I would put that as medium myself.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. I mean, if this is sort of a signaling kind of, uh, document or it's partly both, probably signaling and sort of a scoring document, um, and I take your point well, uh, Ray. That certainly is part of our ordinance and a comprehensive plan, as we all know, that, you know, maintaining that balance between development and environment is really important. Alright, so suggestion to score this as medium. Okay, if no objections, then let's move on. And so finally, we had business factors and there are eight. Uh, finally, I guess we got eight factors under business factors. So let's, we'll start with the first one, we'll just go down the list. So the first is the applicant to maintain effective control against diversion of marijuana and marijuana products.
Oh, Dan, sorry.
Yep.
Nope, I apologize. I thought you were reading number two.
Alright, thoughts on that first criterion?
When they say diversion of products, are they talking about some kind of illegal dispensing of these products or what?
I would think so, um, but, and, and it comes, to me, it comes back to, you know, what Ryan said earlier about a different factor is that I'm not sure how we, what information we get from them that allows us to differentiate between applications on this, on this factor. Yep, Jason?
I, I, I think one, I, the primary interpretation of that is I, I, I eliminating or reducing the probability that the product will end up in the hands of youth or underage individuals. And so, uh, having processes in place, I, I, to check IDs to ensure that you know, I, I don't know what all the diversion methods, you know, or anti-diversion methods there are, are out there, but I think speaking to that would be important, especially for our community and, you know, the youth within our community.
And so a lot of that, those details may not already, we, we may not know this, those things obviously from a site plan or a special use permit. But those are details that we could get through the application process. Is that correct, Jason? That's kind of your feeling?
I, I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
So I just, uh, you know, in, in the good old way to understand things, Googled this to make sure I understood it. And the definition that I'm seeing in terms of product diversion says it refers to products sold by unauthorized manufacturers that are distributed into markets other than originally intended. And this is bad because diverted products can be counterfeited, diluted, contaminated, or with expired formulas. So I'm wondering if this is more about the products that are being sold being quality, I guess?
Thanks for that, Ryan. They both seem like reasonable concerns.
Yes, well, having Googled it myself, I got a different response.
And, and something more along the lines of what you had stated, Jason, I assume?
Uh, yeah, yeah, um. So, but, I mean, I think we have the ability to, you know, define this. Uh, and, you know, I would prefer to define it my way rather than Ryan's way.
Yeah, and so we don't actually have an application drawn up for this, right? So I mean, this is something that we could add to the application, a little bit more details on some of these factors, I, I guess.
Right.
So, oh, okay, so given the discussion, uh, where do we think we're, we're putting this? What, what bin are we putting this in? Low, medium, high? Uh, John?
I'd rate this as high for a renewal, but it's going to be awful hard to evaluate this for an original, uh, application.
Jason?
I, I was gonna say hi, I, if we interpret it along the lines of prevent, prevention from marijuana landing in the hands of people who should not have it.
Okay.
Dan, I just want to add for what it's worth, and I'm, I'm sure most people here know this, but maybe some don't. State law says you have to be twenty-one in order to purchase this recreationally.
Okay, um, I mean, I'm fine placing this at the, in the high category. I know that, you know, just among planning commission discussions, uh, in, in planning commission discussions, we did talk about this issue, so. And reflecting the, the concern perhaps in the community, and we should probably put this at high. If there are no objections. Second factor under this is the kind of a capital requirement. Um, so having the necessary capital to comply with the requirements of the ordinance. A, a lot of this, a, a lot of the, the business factors are related or to characteristics of the business that the planning commission doesn't typically consider when we're, when reviewing site plans or special use permits. This is an application, so it's a little different. Uh, and so this one is another that they have sufficient capital to be able to do essentially what they want to do in a safe way that's, that's good for the community. So thoughts on this criteria? I, I can, I can see this one as, uh, being used as a filter for good or for bad, uh, against sort of smaller startup, maybe local startups versus those that are more kind of chain related, that are, are larger, that have businesses elsewhere, uh, and so that might be one thing to consider here. Jason?
I, I would actually, I would suggest that two and three would be rated as low, um. For purposes, I mean, one, I, I think you're right in terms of it could potentially be a filter against lower, uh, smaller uh, entities. Uh, for the second one, I mean, who are we to judge the vertical, vertical experience of the applicant? Yeah, I, I feel like these are overreaches, uh, for, uh, the application process.
Yeah, I mean, these would be things that you might see in a business plan, which I'm not sure we have the expertise to review here necessarily, right?
I would agree with Jason. I think this is overreach.
Alright, so, uh, if there's no objections, we can put the, these two, two and three in the low category, Nick?
Okay.
So stop me if there are any objections. Number four is, uh, the applicant has demonstrated preparedness to provide appropriate employee work conditions, benefits and special training. Some of this, I, I think you, I, I think you can make sort of a, uh, some interpretation of this is sort of having some economic benefit to that township, probably. Partially. Sorry, John, I cut you off. What did you say?
Oh, that's okay. I, I would recommend, recommend we rate this low myself. I, how are you gonna evaluate that for a new business with a new owner and new can, working conditions? I, I can see a renewal. But I'd have problems with this as a new applicant. The same for five. Basically, you're asking the person to have previous experience in this business. And that may or may not be applicable.
Yeah, I, I had both of those as low.
I agree.
Jason?
So two, three, four, five and six are all similar in terms of the, sort of the viability of the business, the background, the experience, the capital. Um, I would suggest that we be consistent either at scoring them all low, or maybe we collapse them into a single category I, that we score. Lower, medium.
It sounds like we're leaning towards low for all of those, I think. Didn't we already score two as low?
Yes.
Okay, so if we put two sorry, where are we? We, did we go three, two? I'm sorry, what, what did you just say, Jason? Two, three?
Two through six under business factors.
Yeah, two through six. I mean, I'm fine with putting all of those under the low weighting. Um, I don't think that we can collapse them if we don't want to make substantive changes to the ordinance, something that we can consider in the future. But for the time being, we can just be consistent and put a low weighting on each of these.
Comments? Reading of this, that, the, these factors have to be included but not necessarily as individual items, so, uh, and not necessarily for against the collapsing, but it seems like as long as this language showed up somewhere on an application and some sort of response was part of some sort of, you know, you, we would have met the letter of, of what we said here.
Okay, good point, yeah. So we construct the application anyway, as long as it reflects each of these eighteen factors. Good point. Okay, so if there's not any objections, let's go two through six as low. And I don't know who, Nick or Jason or, uh, Ryan? Who's, who will be drawing up the actual application? Is that something that the planning commission will see and who's actually doing the evaluation of the applications?
As far as the evaluation of the application, I think it would be exactly like the medical where it's the board's decision.
Yeah.
Um, as to the creation of the application, I'm not entirely sure. I would think that that could be something that could be done in-house by staff, but, um, you know, open to other opinions on how we would handle that.
Okay.
I'd love to hear what Karen's vision has been as sort of the chief staff person. This seems to be a staff level work product, and I imagine she's had some thoughts about where it would sit.
Karen, you willing to give us your thoughts?
Uh, I am. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
So it's, um, up until this point, the two that we have received have been, um, in some fashion reviewed by legal counsel. Um, I can't say that I would like to continue doing that, but for the safety of the township at this point, that has been uh, probably where I've leaned most, um, in regards to that. Of course, that tends to take up a lot of the application fee that people, um, have paid with their application. So I've tried to consider whether or not that's some work that, you know, Nick and I could pair out or, um, in addition with Bert, but I'm really at this time, I'm, I'm hesitant to do that just because of my lack of knowledge in this area.
Okay.
And I don't, this is Bert, are you talking about the scoring of this?
Well, the, not, um, kind of both, um, the scoring and the, the review of the materials, because in some sense, like there's, there's some other material that comes along with the, the application. I mean, it's, it's a very large package of information that comes to us, and so scoring, I'm not as hesitant, but the actual reviewing of some of the documents and background checks and, and, and other uh, other sensitive areas gets a little into, into some waters that I don't care to tread into. And I don't know how you feel, Bert. I mean, I, I don't know if you've done any in any other communities or um, is the scoring or reviewing applications, so.
Not the scoring, but reviewing, um. There's a, too many moving pieces not to have legal counsel review
Yeah.
this, in my, in my opinion.
Okay, that's good, because I, I kind of feel that way, but it could have been my, my lack of knowledge just in this topic in itself, or just my being new in my position, so.
I get this, uh, um, notification feed from Laura all the time on my phone about a revision that has something to do with either medical or recreational, seems like constantly. Um, and every time I get one, I'm thinking, nuts, now I gotta go read it again.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and then try to figure out what's different. And so, um, I think legal counsel really needs to be involved.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, yeah, good, so, um, and I know that's not really kind of what we're talking about tonight, but I think it's a good thing to understand. So seven, I think we've already covered. Sorry, Karen, did you have something to add?
No, 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 I was just, I was laughing because it's, it's just a huge topic.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so seven, we've already addressed, um, eight. Eight is this co-location, uh, not a requirement, of course, but sort of favoring co-location. Obviously, we have a co-location requirement for provisioning um, centers in the township, um, so it's not exactly, uh, overlapping here, a requirement, but we are favoring co-location, which I would think, uh, favors more capital investment as well.
So much. And I, I apologize, I want to jump back to seven real quickly. I know that we talked about uh, business factor seven being similar to compliance factor two. Did we determine that business factor seven would also be in the low category?
I think so, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, the co-location, uh, thoughts on this? I mean, certainly this is a, uh, you know, citing is, is a kind of generally falls under what planning commissioner, planning commissions generally consider. Thoughts on the co-location?
One advantage of the co-location that I can see is if, if they co-locate, then is there less need for the medical, separate medical marijuana facility? We can keep them all in one location. I think that's good.
Yeah, I mean, and, and this might be the case, though, that we may not be seeing any more, any medical marijuana facilities, uh, just because adult use is kind of the, the way things are going now, right? But I, I read this as, you know, one of the, one or more of the multiple uses of adult use being clumped together. Provisioning, processing, safety, testing, growing, you know, those sorts of things.
One for retailing, I think we require that it be co-located.
Exactly, that's right, we do. Not seeing anyone jump here. I mean, I, I have this scored myself as a medium category. Just because I kind of, it comes down to me in different ways. I mean, it's similar to the kind of the capital investment idea, which I don't want to deter local businesses, uh, and startups, but I do see advantages uh, to the township, both economic and health and safety welfare of co-location. So I, I come down sort of in different ways on this one. Any objections to medium or any other suggestions and rationales and arguments here?
I think medium is good. I think the more we can have less facilities out there, the easiest it can be for police and everybody else. So by co-locating, we should reduce the number of marijuana facilities out there.
Yeah, Jason?
I mean, currently, it's a, it's a moot point, but if we adjust the numbers in the future, um, I do wonder if we at some point allow, uh, micro businesses. Um, considering micro businesses are sort of co-located within themselves in terms of what they, uh, what they do. I just want to, you know, we would want to make sure that we adjust this. I
To reevaluate if we do change the number of permits.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so why don't we put this under medium, if, if there's no objections? And move on to the last factor. The last one is sort of the other factor of the grab bag. Although it, it's related, you know, typically to what township, a, a central concern of the township, right? Health, safety and welfare and best interest of the township. So it's not defined probably as well as some of the other factors, but in my mind, it's, it's pretty important and, and maybe throwing that into the high category gives us some flexibility on any of those issues, uh, and, and maybe cover some uncertainty in terms of you know, the, the unintended effects that we may be seeing in the township. So I would argue we'd put that in the high category.
I agree.
Jason?
Alright, this is thumbs up. All right, this is thumbs up.
All right. Okay, so let's do that unless there's not an objection here. So, okay, Nick, so uh you think that you can bring this back to us, Nick, and sort of similar, I I don't know if you need to, you know, do a scoring sheet and all of that, but kind of applying the the same kind of point system that we're using for the CIP corresponding to high, medium and low to have another look at this?
I think so. Um. I'm just trying to think if if there's any more discussion we want to have on this tonight. Um, because I'm sure the board will want to talk about it at least a little bit next week, maybe not.
No, I think I think until this has been hammered out by this group, we we does not need to go back to the board. I mean, I think this group needs to be comfortable with this and and have and have certainly more than one meeting tonight um to to discuss it, review it, digest it. Um, I I'm not comfortable taking it back until this group is comfortable.
The the other thing that we might want to add, and we i- is a rationale, I think, and this is just just for the board as to why we're sort of scoring these or weighting these different things in different ways. I think that would be helpful to the board. And, you know, if you largely would be captured by the comments that we've all made tonight. Um, so Nick, I don't know if you want to take a first crack at sort of really brief two to three sentence rationales for each of these criteria and why they ended up where they are in terms of that weighting?
Can do that. I guess that that was more where my head was at about whether or not this ended up at the board level, whether they were comfortable with the direction that the planning commission was looking at. Um, obviously, of three members of the board here tonight, and I I didn't see any two terribly angry faces, so I think we're headed in the right direction here. So, um, yes, I can do that.
Okay, great. So we'll have the waiting, point waitings, and we'll have a brief kind of rationale, draft rationales for whenever we see this again. Right?
Uh, I I'm sorry to to rewind a little bit, uh, Nick and Dan, but can you remind me this was happening before I was on the board? So where did these uh factors originally come from? How did we come up with some of these items to put into the ordinance?
Uh, they came from legal counsel, but Nick, go ahead.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion on this one? Uh, George?
I was just gonna comment that when this first started, we were kind of taken a cautionary approach to going through this, so that's why hasn't gone honk wild with a lot of things going on. The thing that approaches is still in the works, so to speak. So we are still in steady flow.
Right. And is there any need uh for the planning commission to address the competitive concerns that were raised at the board in any way beyond what we've just done? No. Jason?
I think, I mean, one thing I'm not clear about is um I timing of of applications, and if one application is submitted, what's the timeframe for the review relative to another application that comes in later on after that review? I mean, do we create an application window or a set of windows? Is it once a year, twice a year? I I'm unclear about all that.
It's a good question, Nick.
My recommendation would be that, you know, we not open an application window until obviously, the ordinance is adopted, but we're very comfortable with the weighting of these scoring criteria. Uh, the application has been developed in terms of uh fulfilling those requirements of the ordinance as well as state law and and state uh rules from Laura, but um, you know, waiting until that time to actually open an application window and then uh keeping it open for a set period of time, you know, that we would determine um to ensure that anyone who who feels that they want to submit an application has an opportunity to do so. I don't know about frequency of an application window if we're only allowing one. If we get to a point when we're increasing that number, uh, then that makes sense. But perhaps people submitting an application is an indication that we need to increase the number.
If if I may, um, I'm sorry, Ryan, I didn't mean to cut you off. Um, yeah, so every application that we receive is going to be accompanied by um a a large check um that goes towards um administrative review and legal um review, possibly scoring, um however we decide to work this. So if we had a window where we had, um, let's say, five applications for one um place, um. I I just don't know how I feel. Um, I I think that would be great. Don't get me wrong, to have the the competition. But then um at another point, opening up another window and and maybe then just, I'm just letting this snowball down the road for me in my head um of of having these windows where we open up and we take, you know, five checks for $5,000 and only one one company gets, you know, a a spot at the table. So I I just, I have some heartburn over this, but I do think it should be opened and obviously publicized and I I mean, we've we've met for, I don't even know, sixty meetings, I think somebody said, and and there are still people that are complaining they didn't know about the process. So I I guess we're always going to have people that say that, but um. I don't know. I just, it's it's hard.
Ryan?
Uh, I I share some of those concerns, too. I think we've got to have a window. Otherwise, it's it's hard. We could be right in the middle of reviewing an applicant, and then another one comes in and it sort of resets it because now there's competition. And then maybe a third one comes in at the end of that process. It it makes it so we'd never sort of have closure. And I think the most fair and easily communicated of the process, but I I wouldn't recommend we open a window unless we have permits available because of that $5,000 chat. You know, you know, I don't think we're likely to get uh applicants if we don't have permits, and I sort of ethically don't feel like we should be taking the money if we don't have a way to uh to actually give these folks an opportunity. I mean, maybe in the future, we could look at some sort of like, if you were denied, you get 50% of it back or something like that. I I know that's already in this ordinance. That's on its way, so I want to jack that up, but maybe in the future, when there's perhaps more permits, we might consider something like that.
Jason?
I I personally have no issue taking five grand from marijuana. I I sellers, distributors, growers, et cetera. Um, I I I think one thing for us to keep in mind is that the permit that we issue is less than a year, and then they have to reapply. And so I would expect that we have an application window that opens at least once a year. Um, and then I don't think I, if I remember correctly, that I haven't established business in in the township is a uh one of the uh competitive criteria, but it's not you're not automatically owed a another permit if you apply. So I would welcome I I competition in this regard.
Yeah, I I think that needs to be clarified perhaps then, because there's a whole section on renewal applications.
Yeah.
And it's and it's separate from applications. And you're and and, you know, if you look at our criteria, there is no, there is no waiting for existing licensed adult use marijuana facilities here. There's none.
I thought there was.
So I kind of have a, I have a hard time of throwing those that already have a permit back into the pool and and opening this up broadly to to the application process again.
I agree, Dan. Yeah, no, I agree completely. I I cannot see somebody coming in, building a uh facility from the ground up and because they got a permit one year and then the next year they don't get a permit.
I would, I would suggest that you don't have a license left until you have denied the first guy um for reapplication.
Or or you've increased the number of permits.
Or you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think those things, tho- those predicate the the competitive application process, either of those two things.
I mean, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't make sense to take applications if you don't have a license.
Right. Right. And so we do have one, right? We have one, and so we do have to sort this out fairly soon. Establish a window, a process, an application, and then go through that first process. Nick?
For what it's worth, looking on page eleven of the ordinance, which is page one hundred and nine in the packet. At the bottom there, it talks about approval issuance, denial and appeal. Uh, point A there talks about the application approval timeline. Uh, it states that all inspections, review and processing of the application, including transfer applications, shall be completed within ninety days of the receipt of a completed application and all required fees. And then it states that the township board shall approve or deny the permit within one hundred twenty days of the receipt of the completed application and fees or within one hundred and fifty days of the location of the permitted premises is uh changing essentially. So my recommendation would be that that window be ninety days based on what is stated in the the ordinance here.
Jason?
Um, I'd be a little bit more restrictive. I would actually have an application due date. Um, so that we can live in within that ninety day, those time periods for all applications.
Yeah, I think we want the full ninety days for the review, I think, is what you're saying, and we want to make sure there's a window to get those applications prior to the ninety days commencing. Yeah.
So, sorry, just to jump in again, in effect, the process would be that we would, you know, formally open that that timeframe for applications. It would be open for, say, I don't know, thirty days, just for an example here. At at the end of that thirty days, it would close, and then the review would begin.
Then the clock starts. Ninety days, right?
Well, the the language of the ordinance says upon doesn't it, uh, receipt of the application. So they're all staggered. They're ninety days. So the the smaller we make that window, the sort of the narrow that ninety day, you know, stretch would be, which I think would be advantageous. Yeah.
Correct.
I I almost feel like no matter what you do, it's a first come, first serve. No?
I I I guess if we if we say, if we create a a date and a time, say, July first or June thirtieth at five PM Eastern Standard Time is when applications are due. Um, and we will not accept full applications outside of that particular day, then we have a very clear uh start point for the review process. Now, that doesn't mean that they can't come before us with pre-application questions. You know, support their ideas, just like any other kind of applicant that we've seen uh before us. Um, it just makes it a lot easier on our part, and then if we just do that once a year, I I then I it's a very clean, easy process.
But when that wouldn't prohibit anyone from submitting an application early, would it?
Could we, could we treat this kind of like a construction contract where bids are due at this time, place, if they say it, we're not gonna open any of them until that time?
And and you could just make it a policy that it's not considered receipt, received until opening day.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's the key there. Yeah. And I don't know if that needs to, you need to change the language in this section to, but I think that's that's important. Nick, did you have something?
Bert answered my question for me. That would be my concern is if, you know, someone submitted an application, say, two weeks before that do-by deadline. Technically, based on the wording of the ordinance, that ninety days would start immediately, assuming they had a completed application and they paid the fee. But if if we handle it the way that Bert stated, then I think that solves that problem.
Yeah, and I don't know if you can convey that message in the application itself uh or where you would do so, how how to sort of define receipt of application, but it would be important to do so either in the ordinance or maybe the application is sufficient.
I'm sorry, Bert, can you re-restate the way that you get down?
Well, well, like Ray said, it would act, it would be, it would uh be treated similarly to a construction project uh bid opportunity. Um, where the uh full application can be submitted, but it's not considered received until the opening day.
And it wouldn't be, it wouldn't even be open to look at until the opening day.
Right, that's how, that's the only, that's the where we would be standing in it, because we don't know if it's a complete application until we open it on that date.
Right. Correct. Usually the the checks are dated for that date.
Yeah, I don't know that the check date matters. It'll be the uh opening date on the doc, on the envelope, but sealed envelope. They need to be sealed.
Yeah. That's how we do our sealed bids, too.
Mm-hmm. And Karen, I don't know how to answer the question as to whether or not we need to change the language in the ordinance. Um, we have my thought process is that the application needs to mirror what's written in the ordinance. Um, so we don't have to have that discussion with an applicant.
Yeah, I mean, so the board, the board could change the the language themselves, clarify that. I would, I would recommend doing that, since that seems to be the way we're leaning. Why not just clarify it in the ordinance itself? Jason?
I I have another, going back to reapplications, I just, I wanted to make a point there, so.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if this is.
Go ahead, sure.
Is it? So um, I was just looking at, it's top of page nine, I uh page whatever, one oh seven of.
Yeah.
Um, it says that the, for renewal application, a sub A, same requirements, the same requirements that apply to all new application for permits, apply to all renewal applications. And so I don't know if that's includes the competitive review or not. Um. So I I'm just going back to the, and I'm I'm thinking if the board is able to adjust some of the language of the ordinance that perhaps under business factors, um, if we, I uh item number seven, under business factors of, has already applied or received a permit. I I think we scored that low, but if we take out medical and we just, you know, the the med- uh, the medical marijuana facility, we just say has an existing permit, and then we score that high, then that um creates a threshold or a a preference for existing facilities, but does not take them out of the competitive process.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think that's really problematic still. I mean, I just don't think you're going to get business investment with that kind of uncertainty hanging over you, that you're up. You're in the competitive pool every time, even though you might gain a few points for already having a business. And, you know, that whole section on renewal application, I agree with you, that language probably could be improved. The same requirements, but I mean, the spirit of it, to me, sounds like this is an entirely different process when we talk about renewals, delayed renewals and and and, right? We're talking about a a very different process than the competitive review in my mind. But if that needs to be clarified, I think it should be by the board, Jason.
I I I think one thing that, you know, I do worry about, and I don't know if 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 someone does build a facility and operates a facility but operates it really poorly, what are our options?
We we deny renewal.
Mm-hmm. And then there's you got, then you have a license open and you can open the competitive bidding process.
All right.
Just a uh.
Yeah. But for renewals, there should be no competitive process at all.
Right. I mean, if they're doing a good job, why would you open?
Yeah.
Open.
Yeah, the language looks like it gives them an sort of an on-ramp, or maybe it's an off-ramp. There's days in there, ninety days where they need to get it in beforehand, which would technically their permit is still standing for those ninety days while we review it, so it would seem like it's not up in the air, it's not up for grabs because they still hold it.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it's anything that still grabs until this body says we're not renewing you.
Yeah. I agree, though, that that language that Jason noted is a bit confusing. It's not clear to me what the requirements are, other than I think all the 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 requirements about how you operate your business is what I think is being referred to there. Not going through the competitive review process.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, Nick, you you you're clear on kind of what we're we're going next with this, where we're going next, right?
Yes.
Okay, any further comment? Suggestions? Questions? Questions? Okay. So the only item we have in our new business is the appointment to the ZBA. So it came as a surprise to me that the, the chair of the planning commission is not supposed to automatically be the person that's the representative on the ZBA, which is maybe a, a good thing. But I'm willing to continue that role for the planning commission to sit on the ZBA. But anybody on the planning commission can be that representative to the ZBA with the exception, I think, of our trustee representatives.
That's correct.
Yeah. So I think we, we need to do a formal appointment here. I'm willing to stand if others would like to do so. Let me know. And I'm happy to say, yeah, you go ahead. But otherwise, I'm happy to stand, but we'll need a motion to make that nomination and approval. John?
I move that we appoint Dan to the ZBA.
And George?
I second that motion.
All right, George, second. Any further discussion on the motion? Ryan?
I spoke to the current ZBA chair when I was doing ZBA reappointments and he said he was really happy to work with Dan and would love to have him back. So I think this is a great reappointment for us.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose the same sign. Okay. And the motion carries. All right, Nick, do you have a report for us? Anything additional?
Yes, just a couple of things. We should be having a proposal coming to you all soon, possibly even as early as the next meeting for some, a small townhouse project. Actually, just across the street from the 7551 Coleman Road storage facility expansion, sort of an odd shaped property, but a developer is proposing to put 11 townhouses in two separate buildings. It was a site plan that had originally been brought to me back in October. I'd gone through the administrative review and I was waiting for some agency comments on a couple of things. And that sort of got real quiet over the winter. And now that things are warming up, I think people are getting ready to start putting in applications and get projects going. So I've received revised, revised site plan as well as set of responses to agency concerns. So hoping to have that to you soon. Aside from that, I don't think I have anything else too terribly pressing. And I know I'd already mentioned as a reminder that we do have that public hearing at our next meeting about the storage facility expansion there on Coleman Road. And then one last thing, I'm hoping that at our next meeting, to bring back both the landscape ordinance and the architectural standards. Actually, while we were in this meeting, I received an email from legal counsel about architectural standards and and so hoping to at least provide a little bit more of an update in terms of what we can and cannot do with that at our next meeting.
Great. Thanks, Nick. Any comments or questions for Nick?
Okay. Couple of things.
Yeah.
So a few meetings back, maybe a couple of months back by now, we brought to you a concern that our language doesn't have a definition for fronted, road fronted. And I'd like to see that discussion get picked back up sometime in the near future. Because we're getting land division applications and so on. And I'm still applying the ordinance just like I have for, I don't know, 15 years, 20 years, whatever it's been. But I'd really like to have clarity on that for because, because we really should have clarity in the ordinance as it relates to that. And then the, sort of the last comment, and maybe this is something for Karen to, to think about and/or Karen and Nick. Earlier, you guys talked about some agreements that needed to be drafted for a project earlier in this meeting. As it relates to a project that's going to be an agreement between the township and developers, MDOT, et cetera. And I don't know, this could be common practice that I'm not aware of, but those agreements really need to be reviewed by legal counsel. Because if those agreements are not sound and defensible, the township could find themselves in a position where they get to maintain the sewer. Just my thought.
Thanks, Bert. On that first issue, Nick, if we do get that back fairly soon, we're going to need like a, a good summary of kind of where we left it and the concerns that were raised at that time, since it's been so long since we've talked about it.
Yeah, absolutely. I know that the last time we talked about it, I think it was in December. If I'm remembering correctly, I don't think Bert was at that meeting. And I felt a little out of my, my comfort zone, if you will. So I felt like maybe I wasn't doing the best job of leading that discussion. So as long as I know that Bert will be able to make our next meeting, then I'm, I'm comfortable bringing that back and having that discussion. But yes, I will make sure that I'm able to outline some of those comments and concerns that have been expressed previously.
Great. Okay. Any other comments? So I guess we have an opportunity for public comment. I don't think we have any public left. So let's move on to trustee report.
Hi friends, just a quick report on what we have worked on in the past couple of meetings, or at least in the past meeting. We had a marathon vote on placing board member, committee members onto committees. So ZBA has members, senior services, Park Lake Advisory, Housing Commission, Farmers Market, Public Art, Construction Board of Appeals, DDA, Election Commission, Parks and Rec, Police and Fire, Sewer Board of Appeals. So that's good news. Now some of these committees can move forward and meet because they have quorum. What you did not hear in there was planning commission, unfortunately. So we haven't had any new contenders brought to us by the supervisor for our committee. As you know, we did the first reading and introduction of the adult use ordinance and also the zoning ordinance that has the definitions that came from this committee. We passed a mandatory COVID-19 vaccination policy for the police department. We changed the end time of our meetings so that they can't be, or we're going to at least, we discussed this beyond nine o'clock rather than 10 o'clock. If you recall, a couple of meetings ago, we had a real late meeting. So we've changed that. We also did a review of the resident equivalent units for the sewer. That was an interesting conversation and received an update on how long and what structure we can continue to do these electronic meetings. So slowly but surely, the board's taking on more and more action. I hope we continue to take up more and more in quantity and more complex issues as we know there's lots to be managed in the township.
Thanks, Ryan. Any questions, comments for Ryan? Okay, a final opportunity for planning commissioner comments, anything at all? Okay, George?
I just wanted to comment about the road thing. We'll, we'll be setting up a road committee meeting here shortly, but also I would like to bring up some type of discussion that we may be able to hold some of the contractors or whoever does the work on the roads that that have the issues a year or two afterwards. I don't know if there's anything we can do. So I'm throwing that out to you all. A good example of that is Slate Road to the west where we have the, some will be skip patched before they're chip sealed. But you know, that's just an extra cost to the county and to the township that really is, shouldn't really be obvious in the long run. And that, that's all I have to say about that. And I like the control sheet, Nick. That's pretty awesome. That's about it as far as I, I know it's cool.
Thanks, George.
Dan, if I may, I know I'm not a planning commissioner, but thank you. I really appreciate everyone's work tonight. I appreciate these meetings and I hope to attend these meetings with you a couple of times a month. I think what you're doing is critical. I value the knowledge of this group and there's not a group out there doing more important work in my opinion. And, and not to put anybody else down, but so the Clinton County Road Commission has invited us to a road committee meeting electronically on March 18th. We will most likely have additional conversation after that meeting, just with, with our group without the Clinton County Road Commissioners. But we will be putting together our representatives of the Webster Road project so that we can get the, the, get to work on that issue. That's critical as well. And just make sure that we're keeping up on things that need to move forward. As Ryan said, I, I like that we're moving forward in complexity of what we're dealing with at the board level. I hope that you're tuning into those meetings because a lot of the work is relevant to what you are all doing. So I think there are going to be some recommendations or a recommendation to your committee for a vacancy that I saw tonight as a draft. So I hope that we're all able to discuss that soon. And if you ever have any questions or comments, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm at your disposal. A lot of people think I'm, I'm very busy and I am, but that shouldn't dissuade you from reaching out to me anytime that you want to share a concern, stop by talk. You know, Jason and I have coffee every couple of weeks, so Ryan tries to visit me, but I'm already gone for the day. So, but I'm, I'm available anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Any other comments?
Karen, I have a question, Chair. I have a name for the internet, for the internet for the committee. I didn't know who I was supposed to give that to.
Oh, you can email that to me, George.
Okay, very good.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're at that point. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, adjourn. I'll second that.
Let's give it to George, second by Jason. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Nice job, everyone. Today we had a lot on our plate. I think we were fairly efficient with our time. Enjoy the rest of your evening.